Administrator, please. Have the clerk, please, call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Poleski. Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Shatwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines are simple. Each individual will state their name, have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time.
Paul McCaughan. Ian Paul McCaughan.
Good morning. I'm Scott Hiller. I'm a lifelong resident of Jackson County and current living in Summit Township. I'm a retiree of Jackson County Office of the Sheriff, 2014. I am one of the lucky ones that are still pulling a pension. I'm a co-owner of a business here in county with my wife, sitting right back there. When I was hired, I am a retiree, you know? So when I was hired at the department, we had great insurance, we had benefits, we had a pension, the road patrol had longevity. Now it seems like what I'm hearing is it's a revolving door. It's a stepping stone for young deputies. There's no retention value. Why? Is it because there's no pension, no benefits? You know, I just, it's mind boggling to me. Right over there is a picture of my stepdad, James Rice, who was chief of police in the city of Jackson and served on Jackson County Commission. He even sat in chair for several years. And I ask myself, what would he be thinking and saying right now? I am sure it would not be pleasant and it would be disappointing, like a lot of citizens are, about this situation that's going on right now with the sheriff's department. I'm just sickened by the fact that there's a $1 million, $1.5 million cut to the sheriff's office that may terminate 12 or more road patrol deputies and you might lose a third shift patrol for the county of Jackson. This is true. How could this be? Is it because the millage did not pass or is it because at this point the county commissioners are making cuts in the wrong places? Is it because Jackson County has one of the lowest budgets for its sheriff's department in the state of Michigan compared to other counties? I don't know. I'm just asking. Because the safety of the citizens are depending on you at this point. If this does happen and we have to lose jobs in no road patrol division, then that falls on the county commissioner's shoulders. And you'll be the ones that will go down in history, in my eyes, because the last, I don't know how long I've been here, 57 years, Jackson County has had road patrol on nights. So to me, if you can't find the money, then that failure falls on your shoulders. Thank you.
Good morning. Third time speaking to you guys. I'm a concerned, my name is Stacy Breejack and I'm a concerned business owner and resident of Jackson County. Since 2006, the population of Jackson has decreased. The average household income is like $55,000. In 2024, and that was in 2024, in 2021, after the COVID-like lockdown, the water rates increased by 12% and the sewer by 4%. In 2023, the water rates also increased by 8% and the sewage by 6%. That's not to mention Summit Township will be increasing their water rates by 50% in the next five years. All the while, gas prices have increased, property taxes have increased, food prices have increased by 22%, not to mention the consumers' prices have increased. The motto of this commission meeting is safety. My property tax money should include this, include safety to all of Jackson County, not just parts of it and at certain times. In 2022, the board excluding Mr. Baer, thank you, sir, gave Mr. Overton a 3% raise. And my humble opinion, I believe that was unnecessary. Mr. Overton, you make at least three times the average amount of the household earnings in Jackson, and yet you expect the Jackson residents to give you even more just for their safety. The sheriff's department should always be included in the budget. Putting money into a food kitchen and geothermal parking lot not going to keep the community safe. It's no secret that the jail has needed work for years and the sheriff's department has helped our community for years. So I just can't understand why they are not included in the budget. I understand you have a lot of pressure to do what you think is right for the community. Just know that your decision not to fund the sheriff's department will result in a ripple effect that will have dire consequences. I would love to stick around, but I actually have to go to work and, because people need Jesus, so I will stick around a little bit longer. But thank you, Mr. Overton, for all your work and at least helping with the community, trying to keep us safe. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment?
Deanna Wymer, Napoleon Township Supervisor. I would suggest that in the aftermath of the failed public safety millages, the really important thing to do while the information is still accessible is to find out why the people who voted yes actually voted yes and why the people who voted no actually voted no. To me, a millage is very different from trying to get a person elected. You can use the same techniques that you use to sell vacuum cleaners or use cars to get a person elected. But to get a millage passed, what you have to do is tell the people the truth in a form that makes sense to them. Then you ask them a very straightforward yes or no question afterwards and they answer with their vote. So at some point in the not-too-distant future, I suspect about a year from now, there will need to be another attempt at a millage. So it's important to understand why people are making the decisions that they're making on the public safety millage. And now is the time to find out the details, in my opinion.
Good morning. Brenda Humphrey from Summit Township. I know you're, we're all here for the same reason. It's about our protection of our sheriffs. It's going to affect all of us in the county, and I'm in Summit Township, and we do need the patrol for night shift. And again, like Stacy was saying, this parking lot is a courthouse. I don't understand drilling holes and if it's for the structure of the building, I understand that, but $11 million for a parking lot when we need the money to go to the sheriffs instead? I mean, these deputies are losing a job and their families, and they could possibly just move right out of town or out of state because where else are they going to work? All of us had jobs. I'm retired. I could move out of Jackson. If our crime goes up, I could. But I don't want to leave my grandchildren and kids. So I just, again, on the ballot, it was all worded wrong because I talked to two daughter-in-laws on Thanksgiving. They're very brilliant. And they said they didn't understand the way it was written. It was not written correctly. We asked to go door knocking, a lot of us patriots. We asked for a town hall. It didn't happen. You know, it was not put out there right and it needs to be readdressed. And please, we're begging you to take money elsewhere and not from our sheriffs. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Mary Jo Montague. I'm a retired nurse, did most of my career at the state prison of Southern Michigan, and I saw firsthand what crime does. And I saw firsthand how these officers, whether they're sheriffs or people that work at the prison, what they go through and the dangers that they have. I reiterate what Brenda said in regards to the parking lot to make it warm. Well, you might not even have a sheriff department or a police department if money isn't put where it really needs to be put. The crime in this city is absolutely horrific. I live on the east side of town, Blackman Township, and it's, every night, it's something. And if we don't have law enforcement there and keep them safe and keep them working, I don't know what's going to happen to this town. So I think the priority really needs to be for our safety, not only for us, but for our upcoming kids, and to show them a worthwhile career that really means something. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of the study session from November 5th. I have a motion from Commissioner Kennedy, support from Commissioner Snell. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item five, public hearing of the 2025 budget and budget presentation. Administrator Overton.
Good morning. Thank you. First, we'd ask the finance director to come up and present the budget presentation. And then, of course, it's a public hearing, so it's open to any and all comments from the public.
Good morning. I'm Cecilia Anderson, Finance Director for the county. I am here to go over proposal for the 2526 budget. So the first thing I'd like to want to talk about is just the process that we go through with the budget in the first step. If you look on page two with the Jackson Board of Commissioners Strategic Priorities, our budget process starts in the middle of March with the requests from the department heads to go ahead and fill out and update their, update their performance measures, document their progress, maybe their strategic plans and their goals. That's our first step. I mean, that's the foundation of our budget. And those priorities were set by you as commissioners. And as staff, we appreciate that leadership and the helpful, and it helps us to create the budget as to what is important to you. So that's kind of like our first step. So if we go into page three, we can just kind of go ahead and look at what are, where we're at with our general fund expenditure history. We have seven years of actual, we have three years of budgeted expenditures, and we have a draft for '26. '26, we are not asking for that to be adopted at this time. It's just for informational purposes, but we are requesting that '25 would be adopted. And as you can see, there's not a 4.6% increase in our expenditures. Three and a half percent of that is benefit, fridges and benefits. There is no cut in this expenditure budget that we're proposing right now. So it is everything that we've talked about up until now. If you look at our revenues on page three, you will see that our revenues are less than our expenditures. This budget is using fund balance of $1,250,000. And then, so the increases in our revenues, we've had property taxes increase of over $1 million, which is about 3.5%. Marijuana, we have $300,000 increase. And then revenue sharing, we have an increase of $531,350. That's pretty much, the state has changed the revenue sharing and now they're adding what's called a taxable value payment to us. So that's our increase there. Any questions on page four, on the revenues piece? It's on page five, our expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my, I guess my first question is you mentioned that we're spending roughly $1 million in fund balance.
This budget is proposing $1,250,000 use of fund balance.
Okay. Do you know round figure where those dollars would be going to?
It's just, no.
If I may jump in there. What we did was, we knew the budget was short. You know, we had to go ahead and build a budget, and so the board at the time of building the budget hadn't made any determinations of what there would be far as cuts and things like that. So what we do is we build our budget, because we have to post our budget a few weeks ago publicly for everyone to see, and it needs to be complete. So we hit it with general fund, fund balance, to make it balance. My expectation is today is, after the public hearing, we'll have a conversation and make some determination as to what you would like to change. It is a viable option to draw down reserves. It's just not a long-term viable option to continue to do such things.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With respect to these revenues, there are, there are no more monies left from the old jail millage. Is that correct? We've gone through all of those past dollars. That was a couple of years ago that it, that finally.
Yes, that's correct.
The millage expired and, but there was some kind of lingering revenues, if I recall, or lingering fund balance. We've gone through that. Now that's gone.
Yes, for '24, yes.
And it's a deficit budget, 1.25 million. Where will that leave? Perhaps you'll discuss this in the future, and I'm sorry, I'm anticipating, but just to make sure that when we get to the point of what our fund balance will be after this.
Yes.
I'd be very curious to see what our drawdown will be. We can't deficit spend forever any more than a family could deficit spend forever. I suppose the United States can because they get to print money, but we don't. The only way we get money is from, is from taxpayers. So thanks, Cecilia. I look forward to hearing that factor, that, that information when we get to it.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for any interruption.
Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Chairman. Got a question back on page three. The general fund expenditure, you expect this year, are general fund expenditures will be increased by $2,493,000?
Yes.
And your, on page four, your general fund, what monies, what monies are included in this general fund number of $51,813,000? Does that include the increase in state revenue sharing for this year?
Yes, sir.
Does it include the, what the county will receive in the recreational marijuana excise tax?
Yes, sir.
And does it include the energy credit that we will be receiving from the federal government for the energy expenditures we have been making?
No.
You're sure about that?
Yes.
Okay. The energy savings, which we are guaranteed by Verigie, has that energy savings or the amount of money that we need to spend on, on energy to heat and air condition and light our buildings? Is that reduction in energy cost reflected in this budget?
It is, it is in the expenditure piece of it, and it's also going to be used to help pay our debt service.
Okay. Well, we've got, and I'm not following these numbers. If we have an increase in our, well, and does this also include the increase in our operating millage of $1,383,000?
What operating millage? Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what he said. The county will, our administrator previously has told us, as real estate values go up, the millage percentage stays the same. But because the real estate values go up, the dollars that we receive go up. So we are anticipating receiving $1,383,000 more from our operating millage? And is that number included in here?
Yes.
Okay, well, if we're increasing, if we've got increases coming in of over $5,220,000.
I don't understand where the $5 million is coming out from, Mr. Baer.
The increases that we will be receiving in 2025 over what we have been receiving in 2024. Operating millage increase, $1,383,664. The marijuana excise tax, $886,295.25. The, the energy credit, $1,989,868. The energy savings of $961,209. You add those items up, it comes to $5,221,036. So it's five, it's over $5 million that we're taking in, in 2025, that we did not have in 2024.
Okay. So the marijuana, the increase is only $300,000.
I'm sorry, could you speak up or closer to the microphone?
The increase in the marijuana for '25 is only $300,000. And the energy credit that we're going to be received is not for operations, it's to help us pay our debt service payment. And then the energy savings that we also have is also to help us pay our debt service payment. And our debt service payment has increased in our '25 budget. And then the, there was something else that you had said that was covering the whole entire county, but the general fund is only a small piece of that, like 60% of it. So I don't remember the last piece you said.
Okay, in the staff report presented by our administrator, where we, where the board authorized the, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the company now. They're currently doing our audits. They won't be doing it anymore. When we authorized in September that they fill out the forms, the federal tax return to get that $1,989,000 tax credit, that same staff report said that that money was due for, that money needed to be held for a payment in 2026. So if we're receiving that money in 2025 and that debt service payment isn't due till 2026, what are we doing with that $1,989,868? Where are we holding that for a year?
It'll be in the vestments.
Pardon me?
It'll be in our money market account, holding and waiting for us to use it, to make it available for us to pay it. But we also pay a debt service payment once a year.
Can you provide for me a Can you provide for me a debt service payment schedule? So I know what payments have been made and what payments.
I'd be happy to do that.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Well, anyway, okay, even if you take out that energy credit, we're still taking in 3 million more than we did last year. I don't see why we need to cut the sheriff's budget. I don't know where this money's going. We're bringing in 3 million more and we're saying we don't have money to pay things. I'm going to need more information.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. If we go back to page three, to our bar graph, you will see from 2017 to 2023, we're basically flat for six years. It varied 1.2 million up and down over six years. So actually, '21 was, or '22 was only $800,000 more than five years previous. The lack of funds coming in is the issue. It really isn't, I mean, it isn't any misrepresentation or miscommunication the commissioners have done. From 2017 to 2023, we're up $800,000. Administration has been, 800,000, administration has been pulling rabbits out of hats, making this thing balance. It hasn't really went up until this year. And this year, it went up a little over 2 million. So, no, excuse me, 1 million. It's lack of funding coming in. As an example, people want roads fixed, we're fixing roads fast as we can. We worked all summer long on fixing roads, and yet the state cut $6 million of our road repair budget. So it's a number of things. There's no erroneous or sloppy work done by the commissioners or the administration. It's just real plain and simple, there's not enough money. And we lost 1.5 million when the budget was retired. And yes, we did pre-planning. We planned to run another millage, and we did. And, you know, it's the only millage that got turned down. Like Napoleon Supervisor said, why? Every millage, I mean, the library millage was $10 million. And people didn't bat an eye at voting yes, we'll support that. But we want 1.5 million for road patrol. And people come unhinged with their vote. It's the only millage, I think, that failed. Yeah, we need to find out why, but it isn't because we didn't plan. We had a plan, and who would have thought that people wouldn't fund public safety? But they would fund a library or numerous other things. And like I say, it's cash. Our only increases in revenue is the 3% a year that we get on property taxes, basically. And inflation's been running at 5 and 6 and 7. So yeah, it happened, but it didn't happen here at the county. We've handled the people's money well. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I thought I was finished with this slide, but I do have one question. First, I want to thank Commissioner Duncan for his last comment, I appreciate those words. But I want to just stress the question that Commissioner Baer made and the answer that you gave. I just want to make sure I understand. So round figure, round figure, he mentioned about an additional $3 million, just round figure, coming in. But I just want to make sure that we understand that those $3 million, round figure again, that's coming in, those are dollars that have already been allocated.
Right. We have the property taxes, we have the marijuana, and we have the revenue sharing.
Yeah.
He mentioned something about energy savings of over 900,000, but not all of that is general fund. And we're only talking about general fund here. So that 900,000, I believe, is countywide. But general fund portion would be a small piece of that. So, and at the end of the day, whatever energy savings we have is to help us make our debt service payment, that we do have a payment every year to do. So I'm not, so.
So, no, thank you, you said exactly what I wanted to make sure I understand, that it's not just a matter of, you know, bringing in money and just kind of putting it in a corner, that the dollars that are coming in, what we do have, have been allocated. Many of these things that we've discussed, we voted on this stuff even years ago, for as these dollars come in as relates to, you know, ARPA dollars that we used for our Veragey project and all this kind of thing. So I just wanted just to make sure that that was stated, that those dollars are allocated and that they are in the budget. Thank you, nothing further.
All right.
Any further questions? Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Chairman. You just said that the, answering the question, you had said these monies have been allocated. My first question is allocated by whom? And this nine-member board has the authority to allocate that wherever we choose, wherever a majority of this board chooses. So if somebody, I'll ask you, again, I'll let you answer that in a minute. But if somebody has allocated money in certain areas, we can change that. That's up to the board. So any shortfalls we have anywhere, this board can move that money around to fix it whatever way we want. And, I'll make that motion later, thank you. And so can you tell me who it is that made these allocations?
I can. It's the budget you're looking at right in front of you. This is the allocation she's referring to. Staff gets together, starting in March, working on the budget. It culminates, usually approve the budget in September. Given all that's happened this year, it's going to be December before we approve the budget. It has to be legally approved before January 1. This is the allocation that we put forward. I think Cecilia made it clear that 1.25 million of this is coming from general fund. That's where we have it currently, we have a deficit budget. You can choose to leave it that way, or you can choose to make motions sometime during this meeting to make changes so that we balance without using general fund. That's, will be determined by the board here. I think that's what you're referring to. But the budget isn't approved until this board votes on it.
Further questions? Please continue.
All right, so I believe we're on page five on expenditures. And this, the wages and benefits, again, is up 3.5%, but the allocations are between the wages and benefits and all the different categories. The percentages are the same as last year. So it's, percentage-wise, it's very similar to prior budgets we've had in the past. How many questions on this slide? And again, there's no.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Pretty sure, I know the answer, but I want to make sure it's the case. This is anticipating increased labor costs are going to come through contract negotiations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pulaski.
Thank you, and with respect to the adjustments to the budget we're contemplating, what are we doing with the various budgets as far as cutting them in response to the jail millage not passing? Are the wages and benefits reduced as a result in this?
Not in this budget, not at all. There is no cuts whatsoever in this slide on the expenditures. What we are seeing is that the revenues don't balance to our expenditures, and we're using fund balance.
Okay, well, I'll look forward to that discussion when we get to the end of it, all right, thank you.
Okay, if we can move on to slide six. This is looking at the 22 actual, 23 actual, 24 budget, 25 budget, against the draft of the 26, with the different categories as a comparison. Any questions on this slide? So if we move on to page seven, this is the 2025 expenditures by group. And this is, all the different groups are, again, are very similar to the same percentages of prior year. The only difference, I believe, I remember looking, public safety is actually up one percentage point, but everything else is pretty much the same. Any questions on this slide? And the next few slides explains what departments are in each group. There's a slide for public safety, and it shows all the different departments that fall under public safety. There's also a slide for general government and all the different departments that fall under general government. There's also a slide for judicial that shows all the different departments that fall under judicial. Word of commissioners, slide. Social service, slide. And then there's other, which is appropriation, non-departmental expenditures, and retired benefits. So that gets us to slide 14, and this is our general fund departments, looking at revenues and expenditures by the different departments. And there's two slides for that. Are there any questions on these two slides? On slide 16.
Commissioner Pulaski.
Thank you. For example, if I recall, the drain commissioner had asked for an additional person of about $100,000. Is that included as an expenditure here?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
All right, on slide 16, it shows a bar graph of the, this is by the budget of all of our different departments, by a bar graph.
Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This chart is just, previously, we were given a, this chart reflecting what was the 2024 budget. What you're showing now, is this the, updated to what the recommended budget will be?
All right, the difference between the two charts, the 2024 chart that's been used in meetings is actually the general fund contribution made to the departments. So that's revenues less expenditures, and if there's anything left, general fund is funding it. That's what the purpose of that chart was for. This chart is just budgeted expenditures in total.
Can this chart be modified to show what the budget was in 2024? And what this proposed 2025, 2026 budget is? I can't make a comparison to what, I can't get the total number, what the sheriff's budget was in 2024, and what the proposal for the sheriff's budget is going to be in 2025.
All right, if you want, you can use the slides on 14 and 15 to do that. And then, yeah.
As well as.
We can provide.
Last year's budget, it's all there online.
It is.
So here, if you look, there's what we did, actual 23, there's 24, here's the 25 proposal. So there's your comparison, those two.
Any other questions?
Commissioners.
All right, on page 17, it shows our organizational chart and how many FTEs that we, this budget is for. All right. And then, Mr. Pulaski, on page 18, this answers your question originally. If we were to use fund balance for this budget for 2025, it would, our projected fund balance at the end of '25 would be about 22.5%.
And that assumes the deficit of, you said 1.25 million roughly? Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions if we move on? Page 20 looks at all of our funds that we have budgeted, including the general fund. Looking at their expenditure budget, again, for all the different funds that we have.
Just for the benefit of all, that top line is, while we're talking about today, general fund. All those others are additional budgets that the county puts together and maintains.
Yes. Are there any questions on any of the other funds that we have? The next couple of slides will show the JDOT budget in more detail.
Commissioner Kennedy.
I just want to make it clear that there's several items on this list that we couldn't touch even if we wanted to, because they're funded by millages. Would I be accurate in saying that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, from page 14 and page 15, you're showing the comparative budgets from '24 to '25. Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, pointing those out. The problem I'm having is that if you go back up to slide eight, the sheriff's budget is broken up between many, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 different accounts. So I have to go through these, find those nine accounts, and do the math myself. Is there anywhere that these, that's why I was asking on this chart, which we've seen for months, can be updated? So those nine items are totaled up for me? Or do I have to fish through each of these and find the ones and do my own math on it?
Corey.
So it's my understanding, through being the chairman of public safety and transportation, we allocate the total dollar amount to the sheriff. He operates independently of us from there on. So how that's broken up by department is up to him. We don't design that for him, that's for his department to do. Am I accurate in that?
Yes.
Yes, this is broken up.
So what you're asking, so what you're asking for a proposal in '25, it's not something she can give you. The sheriff will have to see the dollar amount that he's allocated, and he would break it down and show you what he was going to do with it by each department.
Where do I find that total dollar amount that is allocated to the sheriff? Rather than adding up all these separate amounts?
16, page 16, your bar graph.
He says page 16 on the bar graph.
Very bottom, longest, longest graph, longest graph there.
Okay, this one, again, comparing. Previous one had total dollar amounts. Okay. This one you're showing, doesn't state the dollar amounts. You can kind of figure out, maybe you can guess, where is this between 10 and 15?
Ready to answer?
But no dollar amount is put on there.
We. Tony, we can get you the budget from last year so you can compare that. It's in last year's budget presentation, the same entire graph is the same, is in the budget presentation from last year.
It's online.
It's online, we can get that for you.
Yes.
Okay.
It's online, I tried going through it.
Last year's budget.
Hundred and some pages.
No, 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 last year's budget presentation, the same budget that you're looking at right now, is online.
Yeah, the one I printed out.
It's, you know what, it's going to be in your drive. I'll get, we can get that for you, we can get that for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem. All right, any other questions on the page 20? All right, so if we move on to page 21, we're looking at JDOT's revenues, and it's broken down by the different categories. And then the next page is their expenditures. So on page 23 is the capital budgets. Page 24 explains how those capital projects are funded. And we have money coming from the general fund, Parks Millage, and the golf fund. On page 24. Then on 25, we are listing out the different projects that we are requesting. I will point out in the public improvement fund, the county jail contingency, we do have budgeted $595,000. But I do just want the board to be aware that our total need for all of our buildings is right around $2.8 million. So I just want everyone to be aware of that. We do our best each budget year to. We do our best each budget year to fund what we can. So any monies that we do have left over, we do put it into a capital project, if we can. Are there any questions on this? All right. And then on page 26, shows the 2024 tax rate request, the millage, and how this is all All right, I'm at my thank you slide, and I do thank you. Is there any other questions?
Commissioner Duckham.
Not a question, just thank you for putting all these numbers together in a understandable fashion. A lot of work, I realize that, but you did a good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baer.
Thank you, Chairman. So if I'm understanding your presentation right, page 16 shows that, can we put page So that shows that the sheriff's budget is just short of 15 million. And in this chart from, the same chart from 2024, the dollar amount for the sheriff was Are you telling me this budget, as it is currently prepared and suggested for approval, is increasing the sheriff's budget by 3 million?
No, Tony, what I was trying to explain to you, remember, that is general fund contribution. The sheriff have contracts with townships. So we are, so that chart is reducing, because they have money that come in that helps support their department. So that chart that was used during this past summer and the spring is trying to explain how much general fund is having to, is having to pay, help with their expenditures. So that's less the revenue that that has come in for them.
So you're not giving me apples to compare to apples?
And I, and Tony, I'm sorry, but I did tell you that I would provide that for you. You will get, you will get a comparison to help you to see that it is very similar.
Okay.
I will do that for you.
I need to see a comparison of apples to apples.
I understand.
And when you give me one chart that shows?
And I told you I would do that. I did tell you that. I will do that. I will do that. It will be sent to you.
Well, I want that available to the public. I don't want the answer just for me. I want the answer for every commissioner and every citizen that pays taxes.
Okay. I will need to get what's in your, the office, and we can get that for you.
So before I can vote on this proposed budget?
It's just in last year's?
I need to know, general fund contributions, have general fund contributions to the sheriff been cut or increased?
They would have been, they would have been, the increase, if the sheriff's, their contracts, they increase 3% every year, their sheriff's contracts, if that's what you're asking. Their revenue for their department.
I'm asking if they're getting less out of the general fund?
It's proposing an increase, Commissioner Baer. This proposal is proposing an increase, as it sits.
Increase in general fund? Because we can control general fund. If there are other sources of money that the sheriff has, grants, we can't control those. So, and so all I can vote on is general fund contributions. So I need to see a comparison of general fund to general fund.
I will, whenever I am done here, I will go print out a slide that shows you last year's amount, and I will have it available for everybody.
Thank you.
I would add that all the information you've requested, Tony, is online and available. But Cecilia will go ahead and create a separate document to show you, but it's all there, it's all there for anybody to look at.
Any further questions? Commissioner Polaski.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. The first slide I would want to refer to is the one at the tail end here, the equalization report, where the top line is our operating millage. And we voted years and years ago to authorize 5.95 mils. We as a county, that's unlimited, it doesn't expire, there it is. But it has been reduced by head, the head limitation, down to 5.066 mils. So almost .9 mils different. Approximately, ballpark, how much money would that be to us, the difference? Nine tenths of a mil?
How much would that be now? Property taxes, property values have gone up a little bit.
It's, it's, it's well over $5 million.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's?
Annually.
That's kind of what I was thinking. So I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that not only the real estate collapse of 2008 is having an effect on our revenues, but the head limitation is having an effect on our revenues. And it's a, it's a negative effect, okay? So that's, that's item one. Item two is back on the FTE page, which I think is 17 maybe? These are the number of positions we've budgeted for in the coming year.
Yes.
And we authorize, when we finish a budget, we say, you're going to, you, all your departments can hire 690.82 FTEs. Does this also include positions for which there is not an incumbent?
There's open positions. If there's open positions, we still budget for them.
Okay. And a number of those are within the sheriff's department, are they not?
Yes.
Do we have, do we know approximately how many there are at the present?
Not at the present.
Okay.
I don't know that.
But that's, that's relevant. In other words, at present, we're experiencing a service level that results from not having all the positions in the sheriff's department filled. Not as many road patrols as we've budgeted for, and not as many corrections officers as we've budgeted for. In other words, we're there right now because we don't have people in those positions right now. Mike, correct.
Yeah.
All right.
If I may jump in there?
Yeah.
And I'm looking at the sheriff, he can give me a head nod, but I think over the course of the year, he's somewhere between six and nine down, averaging over the course of the year, in his sheriff's department, and probably three to five in corrections. Is that a yes or a no?
Right now, we're six on the road and six in corrections. That fluctuates somewhere between, sometimes we get down to two or three. At one point this year, we had all of our positions gone. So it goes up and down.
Exactly, goes up and down over the course of the year as he, I'll repeat what he said. He said he's down six road patrol and six corrections currently.
That's all I have. Why have that one?
Mr. Kennedy, then Commissioner Duckham.
Sheriff, sorry to put you on the spot again, but I just have a quick question. Is that including the two people that are in the academy that were hoping to join the force? Or would that take it down to four once they come out?
No, I exclude them.
So we would be down six, even including those two?
Even including those two.
Oh, okay.
Three. Six, seven, eight, nine.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Go to page 26, and it shows all of our millages that have been passed. We do have the operating millage. We just talked about that medical care facility, .25 mil. Senior Services, .6 mil. Lifeways, .5 mil. Parks, .5 mil. Animal Control, .25 mil. It's not showing the library millage here, which was 1.7 mil. We asked for the bare minimum to support the sheriff, it was .25 mil. And the, why people won't support that, it's the only millage that hasn't passed. Everybody will vote against this stuff. The sheriff, we provided him with $60,000 to hire a firm to do mailers, not promoting the millage, we're not allowed to do that, but promoting the essential facts of the millage, where it was going to go and why we needed it. A group of commissioners rounded up about $40,000 and bought signs, 40 million from donors, and brought signs to put in the yard, signs to put in your yards. We did promote this millage. I don't know, I can't tell you why, but people just, they come in here and complain, and I get it, I want road patrol too, but what more can we do? I don't know what the tarnish mark is on a sheriff's millage, but it seems to be haunted.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple more questions. So I know that we, the question was asked of our positions that we are currently budgeting for that are not currently filled. Of those, of those positions and employees, how much of that is, are we pulling for from that 1.25 million? Does that, does that make sense?
Well, no, I didn't understand.
So we currently, we're having a number of, from the top of the list to the bottom, we're funding positions that are not currently filled. So of those positions that are not currently filled, what's the dollar amount associated to that?
Actually, we don't have a dollar amount for that. That's, you're talking about positions over course of, what, almost 700 people?
Yeah.
People are coming and going all the time, they make various rates of pay, they have families or they're a single, meaning health insurance costs are different, there's a whole variable, a lot of variables there for that. So we don't necessarily have that number. We always budget for the full amount because the expectation is that they're going to hire someone, and the finance or wherever the department is that needs someone.
So my, so if I could be a little more direct, the, so if we were to remove those positions, how much of that would, how much of that would cause for less of the shortfall?
Well, you really can't remove those positions like that. We don't know exactly what they are. For instance, if a key employee is currently vacant, we really, it's key employee, we need that person. We can't just say, we're going to freeze across the board, anybody leaves, we're not going to replace them, therefore use that savings. We can't do that. I mean, heck, if our IT director left us, we'd be in a hard way. We have to replace that position.
So I can understand key positions, but if we have positions that, that are not filled and are continuing to go unfilled, why would we continue to budget for it when we could be using those dollars and not have a shortfall?
Well, here's the thing, as the sheriff indicated, they don't go unfilled. He has, he said at one point in '24, he was fully staffed, so people come and go. And so if I don't budget for that money and he fills it, now I'm short, I don't have the money to fill that. What we, we call that, is we call it float, and it's money, at the end of the year, it's left over. So we don't do across the board freezes like that.
If you'd like to have a seat, we'll hear from the public.
Do you want me to get? Do you want me to go get Tony's paper first?
Oh, if you can do it that quick, sure.
Yep.
I'm just going to run up to my office.
Any public comment to the budget hearing? Please step up and?
Darius Udriess, Fox 47 News, just as a point of clarification, did I hear correctly that 22.52% is the fund balance, including this deficit that you're referring to? And your target is 18 to 24%? So that puts you close to the top of that target, even with the deficit that you're incorporating?
Any public comment?
James Minnick, Columbia Township, I just had a couple of questions. On page 26, the 2024 taxable value of Jackson County is now $6 billion. Just because I don't know, and I don't need that answers right now, I kind of probably need to meet with somebody, and I'd like to go through some numbers, but what makes that increase? Is it, is it the taxes that have just increased and now, now that factors in? Is it because we've increased our budget? You know, how does the state say last year, and I'm, I'm thinking of this number, I don't know for sure, but I think our taxable value was $5.6 billion and hovered around there for a long time, so now it being $6 billion. And then second, and not to put anybody on the spot, but I'm a bean counter, so I don't like generic numbers. I don't like saying, X amount of a budget is a profit share from the state, X amount is a profit share from us, and then saying childcare services is just X amount of millions of dollars. I like to say, okay, out of that budget, and I don't care if it takes me hours, days, or weeks, I want to go through every single solitary line item. And I almost want to go back to the inception of that and find out what it was when it was created and what was the purpose of it, and then to find out if it's necessary and if it is, what has fluctuated in there? And I'll give you a stupid example, but if we allocate, somebody gets to buy staplers every single solitary year, and it, elections come and go, budgets come and go, you see numbers, you see files, and nobody ever goes in and says, hey, we need to eliminate that, we don't need that. And again, maybe we don't know crap from Shinola because alls we do is pay taxes. But I would think that some of these professionals you guys got should be bean counters.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, a couple of things. I think with regard to the shortfall in staffing of the sheriff's department, I would expect that part of that is associated with the uncertainty of the budget. Who wants to come to an organization where their job might disappear tomorrow? I think once his budget is stabilized, he'll have much better luck recruiting staff. And I think, following up on a few of the things that Phil said about the failed safety millages, and going back to what I said earlier, telling the voters the truth. I think the voters were told the truth already in a couple of those millages, but it was in a form that didn't really resonate with them. They need to be told the truth for why the community needs a new jail, not why the sheriff needs a new jail, or why, why the jail is in poor shape, but in a different form of truth, I think. And I think if, if they receive the truth in the form that makes sense to them, I think a majority of people will vote yes. And that needs to be our plan going forward, I think, a different truth, but, but a real truth still.
Russ Jennings, Leoni Township, just something that occurred to me with your guys' discussion, something Commissioner Duckham said and Supervisor Wymer had mentioned about the messaging. And when I was looking through the vote totals, and also what, I was had a conversation with the sheriff, and he's indicated this information to me, which put me on the county clerk's website to look at the totals. It was amazing to me that the out-county townships, the townships without police patrol, additional police patrol, or their own, or contracting through the sheriff, were the ones that voted this down. Your townships like Leoni, Blackman, Summit, they supported it. And when you get back to messaging, I think you have to step back and say, why would townships that have additional coverage at varying degrees would support this? But when you get in your out-county townships, I don't know, five, six, seven of them that have no service at all, were the ones that said no. It does, it makes you wonder where that messaging is disenfranchised between the out-county per se or townships without coverage and townships with additional coverage. So it's just something that hit me in my mind, and I think's interesting when you go about where the messaging was or should be in the future, and how to go about that.
Rosemary Tanner, San Diego, Jackson. Talking?
Talking about the messaging, just this past over Thanksgiving, two of my family members called me and were talking about the jail millage. And I'm, okay, okay, okay. And they thought, and they lived not in the city, but in the townships, they thought it was for the jail. And I kept saying, no, it was for the operating budget. They were totally confused. So, the messaging, no. You guys can sit here and say all you want that you did a good job on the messaging. But if my family members, and I'm out there trying to deliver the message, didn't understand, then the vast majority, I'm sure of the people, did not understand. So, it was clearly the wording, it was the delivery, it was something. But they still thought it had to do with building a new jail. And either they didn't read the millage on the ballot, I, who knows? But anyways, I felt part of a failure too for not clearly explaining to my two family members that, what was going on. So, you know, people are gonna believe what they want to believe. So, just an FYI.
Jeffrey Heath, Hanover Township. The messaging, when you put together the verbiage for what was on the ballot, was, I understand, was under duress because it only had a couple of days between the elections and getting on there. And there wasn't a lot of countywide output. When you do come back for a millage, because I'm fully support, I I fully have confidence in the voters of Jackson County. We do not want to defund the police. That's not what we're here for. We all value the police department and what the county sheriff's department provides for us. So, when you do come back for a millage, when you talk about this in the spring or whatever, do not put jail in the verbiage. Just make it for police department or sheriff's department operations. Then the challenge will be is to hold your feet to the flame that you don't start taking funds from his current budget if you add a millage for his budget. Is don't rob Peter to pay Paul because I just got my taxes on several properties, and we've got that laundry list of millages there. And where our values are in Jackson County, we'd be surely amiss not to, not to support our sheriff's department. I got full confidence that we will. So, when you do come back for a millage, keep the jail off of it. Just be plain and simple. The other thing too on the, on the messaging, times have changed that you gotta have a social media presence. And whoever is advising this board about the social media presence, somebody needs to get on Facebook or whatever and start putting the facts out there instead of letting this made-up named Peter Parker pull us all down into the dumpster, lowest common denominator. So, we need a presence on there, not to argue every point that he puts out there, but just put out the facts, why we do things the way we do and what the sheriff's department's responsible for. Thank you.
Did you want Cecilia to come back and explain what she passed out? Tony, do you need, go ahead, ma'am.
Nancy Thorpe, Rives Junction. I wasn't planning on saying anything today, but Mr. Duckham was talking about, why would people vote this down? Why, why, why? Well, I'll tell you why I voted things down. And that's because I do have a laundry list of millages on my taxes. And when somebody tells me, oh, it's pennies a day. It's only this little amount. It's enough to break the common person's back. And then you guys are spending $11 million on a parking lot? Excuse me? It, it makes no sense to me. I think the money is there, and I think you need to fund public safety before we worry about the other garbage. Thank you.
Can I speak a second time?
No. Go ahead.
This is gonna be much better. It's a sad note, but it's a lighter note. James Bennett, Columbia Township. In recent past, there was a high-speed police chase in which there was a lot of gunfire. A gentleman was found with some bombs. He was from a township in the county that wasn't even in ours. The gentleman that was killed was going through and struggling with long-term addiction, and I'd like to say that with his passing, his pain is gone. He is with Jesus Christ and in the Savior of heaven. I know that. The police that had to go above and beyond and take fire showed courage beyond what I think that they're paid to do, and they showed the courage that we all expect out of our police force, that when they need to be, they can be Andy Griffin from Mayberry, and when they also need to be, they can be a Green Beret soldier to protect us. These gentlemen are probably suffering with a lot of trauma for what they have to sleep with at night. And I want to let them know that I give them, and I hope our community gives them emotional support. They're going through a hard thing. I hope they find fortitude. I hope they stay in the force. I hope that they become a beacon of light for some of the younger officers who might now be afraid. The streets are rough. I could tell you firsthand, the streets are getting rougher. We need not only a strong police force, but these people, these young men and women are gonna be called to do duties that you and I hopefully will never even have to think about, so that we can sleep well at night. Thank you.
Good morning. Amy Hawkins, Plaski Township. As you guys are looking at the budget, here's some questions I have for you. What is your strategic plan for making sure before you pass this budget that we are putting Wesley Street repairs and rebuilds in that budget? That's one question. Second question is, to me, as a citizen, you, honestly, if more people knew what was at stake right now, there would be more people in the audience. What one of the gentlemen recommend, recognized is that one of the values that does represent Jackson County is that they love their law enforcement. So, I understand, I can sit here and respect all the knowledge you have as far as numbers and dollars, but to the average people like little old me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. So, we hire you to do the hard work. What we just want to make sure is that law enforcement is not only present, but their strength improves. So, if you have a household budget, from what I, I believe, if you have a household budget and you say, we have X amount of dollars, what can we do with those X amount of dollars? What I am saying, on behalf of 160,000 citizens in our county, we're saying, put law enforcement at the very top. I don't care what category goes into. I don't care how it's broken down. I recognize and I respect you for the job that's in front of you. But not only do we have a crisis here, we have a crisis that needs to be taken care of from Wesley Street that should have been dealt with 20, 30, 40 years ago. So, before you pass this budget, I'm asking, what is the plan for repairing Wesley Street? What is the plan for moving operation dollars that have been a millage into the general fund? Because I, again, will speak on behalf of 160,000 citizens and say, there is no way that law enforcement and security measures should be done on a millage. It should be a part of the general fund. So, what is the solution for that? And last but not least, do you want to know why officers are leaving here? In part, it's because they don't have good job security. But did you also know that when we bring in new officers and there's not a pension? There is no, there's no solidification for them to want to stick around. They have to watch out for their families. They have to know that if I go out there and I deal with that firefight that just happened and I lose my life. Did you know we almost lost two officers? By the, by the hand of God, we did not. But if we decrease, we, it, it is a greater gamble. So, what I'm asking you as you look at the next budget is, how are we planning for Wesley Street? How are we moving the funds that are needed into the general fund for Chantor, Ongong? How are we getting the law enforcement? Did you have, look at Monroe County. Monroe County has almost exact number of people. Do you know how much of the budget Mr. Overton has, has mentioned several times, which we can all see, is that a large portion of this budget does go to law enforcement? But when you do apples-to-apples comparison, Jackson to Monroe County, they have 158,000 people, we have 160,000 people. They have a $52 million budget. Our budget is, what is it, 49 million? When you look at the numbers, they get 43% of their budget. Why is it the Jackson County that is in the heartbeat of the crime, that's right along 94, that our dear officers have to beg, borrow, beg again for the dollars to keep us safe? So, my, I wrap up with saying, my question to you is, what is our plan for Wesley Street budgeting so we can repair it? How can we get the money from operations into the general fund? How can we make sure our new officers get pensions? And how can we make sure our law enforcement have everything they need and more? And I speak on behalf of 160,000 citizens. Thank you.
Hello again. Brenda Humphrey, Summit Township. Mr. Overton, you're shaking your head no on this $11 million reconstruction project that's right here on M Live. It's a project for aging parking lot outside the courthouse. And you're gonna drill down, I don't know how many hundreds of feet to get this temperature of 58 degrees to keep the parking lot from, you know, freezing. We don't live in the UP. We don't get the snow and the, the cold that they do. Why do we need to spend that kind of money on a parking lot? Like, again, I'm all for structure on a building, but to pay that kind of money, up to 11 million, is ridiculous, and a lot of us want to know why. Thank you.
Go ahead. Please, please keep your comments focused to the budget though, please.
Yeah, this is gonna be a recommendation that might not be something I totally agree with and might not be popular in the room. But like I previously mentioned, Russ Jennings from Leoni Township, I live in a township that has police coverage. Blackman, the city, Napoleon, Summit. And there's a lot of townships that have no coverage at all, and there's several that have minimal coverage, whether they're contracting through the sheriff's department or have their own departments. Since the county has proven not to be very good at passing a millage that's public safely related, if I was a board member, I'd be real reluctant to recommend putting this back on a millage again. How many times can you get kicked in the teeth? But I wonder at what point do you approach the townships that have minimal or no coverage and say, hey, can you find this out of your general fund? Can you put it in front of your voters? Maybe they can sell it. You know, I live in a township. I've gotta pay for additional coverage. So, why not Rives? Why not Plaski? Why not Plaski and Hanover get together and maybe do this together? Get with the sheriff, contract out. Now, we got coverage. For example, Norville Township was contracting out with the sheriff's department, for whatever reason, beyond me, I don't know why they would, they decided to put their own department together. I think it's a bad idea. She's gonna stay with the sheriff. But for whatever reason, they found $100,000 in their budget to do that. So, I would assume Rives can find 100 grand somehow to do it. Plaski, Hanover. Maybe that's the route we need to go, to sell additional coverage to the townships and see if maybe they can't figure it out. Like I said, I gotta pay. Why shouldn't they?
Any further public comment?
One of the things to remember is even townships like mine that have our own police department, we only have one officer on patrol. When there's a truly dangerous situation and they have to call for backup in the middle of the night, it's the sheriff's department usually that has to show up. So, it's not a matter of just having one police officer somewhere. You have to have that second layer of support in dangerous situations. And, and that's one of the key things the sheriff's department does, even for those of us that have local police.
Any other public comment? Entertained a motion to close the public hearing. Have a motion? I have support. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public hearing is now closed.